You tell me, say make I know that everything's gonna be okay. You are the father to the fatherless, the miracle walking God. You make the blind man see, you make the crippled man feel. You are the leader of Galilee, you make impossible possible.
We want to say good day and welcome to Family Connection International. A forum where we share life, teaching, experiences, and stay connected. Today is Sunday, July 6th. And welcome to this very special edition. Our host, Democrat Kevin Richard, candidate for city council in New York City, New York City District 49. But as always, our colleague Levi and Ben. And let me go to Ben and say Ben, happy birthday and welcome.
Wonderful, thank you so much for reminding me for getting older another year, right? So I appreciate that brother and I'm doing fine. I'm so grateful to God for adding another age of my life. And I look forward to what he has in store for me for the coming year as well. And I'll back to you there in the studio.
Absolutely, and thank you so much and bless God for another year. And we want to say Levi, welcome, how are you?
Well, thank you also, I'm doing, I'm doing fine. It's good again to be on this platform, it's another lost day. And we can't just wait to dive into the conversation for today's day. And we want to say happy, 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 prosperous birthday to our colleague, Brother Benjamin Catall. May you green or back with you strong.
One day at a time.
And today, now we have on the show, this, actually, I believe this is his third time being here on our platform. We want to say Kevin, thank you so much for accepting our invitation and welcome again Kevin.
Thank you all, thank you for having me and as you say, happy birthday Ben. I wish you many more years to come and I'm honored to be here.
Great, great. Yeah, just to let our viewers know I'm over at today, so. And Levi, do us the honor and do all the technical work behind the scene of whatever you guys can do. And but let's start this ball rolling Kevin. I know you're a family guy and this whole COVID is kind of winding down. How is it like?
Um, I mean, uh, I know COVID was a major interrupter in our normal activities. But since we've all been vaccinated thus far in my house, so. I'm more confident to actually interact with people now and so forth. But um, I see we're getting back to some sort of normalcy gradually. And hopefully things will get back to to as we normally know things used to be.
Thank you so much. But for the baby as well on us tonight and those who don't know Kevin, can you tell us a little about yourself? Who's Kevin Richards?
Um, my, my story is, um, is one that, um, exemplifies the, the American dream. My name is Calvin Richards. My mom is from Ghana, my dad is from Liberia, and matter of fact, I was born in Liberia. I grew up in Liberia until the civil war, when I found myself displaced in Ghana. I'm living on a refugee camp, in Buduburang Refugee Camp for five years. Um, I endured the war, I endured the struggles in the camps. And I came here, um, from my dad after high school. I came to Staten Island. I, um, I worked overnight, put myself through college. Graduated with honors and got a scholarship to law school. After law school, I came back into my community here on Staten Island. And I've been working as a public defender since I worked in the criminal court. I met my wife who is Nigerian, she's a medical doctor. She's from Nigeria, we met in college. And, and we've been living in New Brighton with our two little kids, Malia and Prime. For over the past five years now in New Brighton, we mentor young people that want to go to medical school or law school. So in the, in the, in a brief summary of my trajectory from a youth in Liberia to refugee camp to now in Staten Island in New Brighton. Doing the work in the community, that's a general brief overview of, of a summary of, 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 of why.
Great Kevin, I know for those who don't know, Kevin, he introduced himself and he also running for city council District 9. City council is the New York City Council. So what have motivated you to run for city council? Maybe enough to become a member of the city council for District 49?
Well, I, I will explain what the city council does. So, um, the city council in New York is the legislative body of the city, not the state. Because some people get confused. For the state, you have the assembly and you have the senate. But for, for New York City, the five boroughs in New York City, we actually introduce bills and laws that govern the city. The city council also monitor and oversee all New York City agencies. We also here in city council, uh, control the city land use. When and where developers can actually have major developments in the city. Um, so that's in, in, in a nutshell, the work of the city council. We provide funding for capital projects in the district. So it can, it could be, it could be a hospital, it could be a school, it could be funding for park, new parks and new programs. And we also provide discretionary funds to non-for-profit organizations that actually addresses certain issues and concerns in, in the, um, the community. So that's, that's notionally the work of the city council. Now, why I'm running to be a, 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 a city council member is because I am a public defender here on the North Shore for almost a decade. I'm a fighter, I've done more with less. If you look at my background and how far it's opened to where I am today. And I'm a strong advocate for improving the lives of people around me. And I believe my background, my advocacy, uh, my ability to do more with less. Prepares me to be the best candidate in this race with the passion, the integrity, the background. And the way we thought to actually push, um, New York City Council to get more for Staten Island. For far too long, Staten Island has been referred to as the forgotten borough. Uh, we've been neglected, they always call us the last borough, meaning we get on the, 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 the short end of the stick when it comes to development. Uh, we, we're not always on the table when big decisions are being made. We contribute to nine percent of New York City's budget, but we only get four percent of that. So my job is to actually use my skills with working across the town. And getting things done to secure the resources that we have on the shore.
Great Kevin, I know it will be a great discussion tonight, but I got. Follow us live on Facebook and also on YouTube, you can drop us a comment, you can drop us a question if you want, some concerns you have. Excited to bring that far to Kevin, I'd like to go over my colleague Levi, Levi.
Yeah, um, once again, want to say welcome to, um, Brother Richards, want to say welcome to the platform. We have enough feedback, um, low terrible, so we have to do some technical background. Yeah, so we were, um, who can take a minute to read this?
What's the feedback coming from? I don't think it's from my end, can you check your end? Are we okay?
Um, they are saying that the line is very, the sound is very bad. So we trying to, um, figure it out, just bear with us.
We just want to go to Ben, Ben, are you ready? I think Levi is using his earpiece, I think he's. Thank you.
No, I got, I got the earpiece, I got the earpiece, um, thanks for giving the same problem.
Okay guys, can you hear me?
No Levi, you're terrible, your fever is terrible.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Is there still feedback from Levi? Wow. Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you Ben, but it's kind of grounding, same problem. So it's probably with you and Levi, the device that you have to use. There's that wire.
All right, uh, Brother Richard, uh, good to see you again and welcome on our forum again as usual. I wonder if you can hear me?
Yes, of course I could hear you, I know you guys are going through some technical difficulties, so I just put myself on mute just so that I will have no reception. I think someone's device is little, I know you guys are using new devices today, but, um, it's a bad reception.
Yeah, my two colleagues are actually remotely connecting and probably because of their remote connection. And the device that they are using is what creating the negative feedback, we are so sorry for that, hopefully that will be resolved shortly. Having said that, I would like to first of all congratulate you for taking that bold step to run, to become a councilman. At, uh, at the city that you are personally running to become part of. And it's, it really encourages some of us, especially we that live in the diaspora and knowing where we came from. To see someone like you, you know, setting that example that there is no limit, absolutely no limit, especially when you come to the United States. The only limit is the sky, as we will say sometime, the meaning that there are a lot of endless opportunities. You just need to make use of the opportunities available in the right way possible. And in your case, you are advancing to help build your community, the community that you live in. You want to make sure that that community comes to a very good level that people can say yes. When you live in this community, it is a blessing to be part of that community. So I'm so grateful for that bold step that you are taking. Having said that, Brother Richard, I want to nail down on some of the questions that you probably have on your platform. That Trump may not have the time to go through in reading those questions. And to begin with, I would like to know what will you do to ensure your district fully recovers from the pandemic? As you know, we going through this COVID-19 pandemic. And if you are elected in a position that you are looking for, what will you do for your community to fully recover from the pandemic?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, first, uh, the pandemic actually affected greatly our small businesses. And the small businesses actually needed, um, the support of the federal government and state and local government to actually stay afloat. And my job is to actually navigate the system to help these small businesses. Because the problem we saw with, um, with COVID and the PPE loans, um, for instance. The small businesses actually struggled to get the funding that needed because of red tapes. And they weren't actually aware of certain deadlines and how to get these fundings. My job is to link them up with organizations that actually help these small and local businesses to make sure they're on time to get the funding they need to stay afloat. We saw the first batch of stimulus, um, on COVID relief that actually came out. The big banks and the, and the big corporations got, uh, 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 on their checks first before the local and small businesses, before your mom and pop shops or the bodega or the deli down your block. Why? Because they weren't actually connected, they didn't have the correct resources to actually apply for these loans, get them on time and so forth. So my job is to actually ease the burden on small businesses first. But I also want to actually address the psychological, the psychological issue when it comes to, uh, 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 vaccination. Like I told you, my household, we fully vaccinated. I actually want to educate my people and tell them the vaccines are safe. I, you know, I, I, I want to show pictures of, of me taking the, um, uh, uh, on the vaccine. I want to share stories of my wife being a medical doctor, discussing, discussing on the vaccine. Because when we're all vaccinated, we actually control the spread. And I understand our history, I know that, um, the African-American community, we were taken, uh, uh, advantage of with the Tuskegee experiment back in days. Where we were used as guinea pigs to actually test certain drugs and like when it came to syphilis and so forth. Certain folks were lied to that they were given vaccines, but they were given placebo with nothing in the syringe, just water, you know? And, 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 and just to see the effect of, of, of syphilis and so forth. So our people have a history of untrust when it comes to vaccines and the federal government issuing vaccines. So that untrust has actually carried on to the COVID vaccine. And my job is to actually, um, educate our people more that we all need to be vaccinated, we all need to actually be part of, uh, 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 the pool of people. Who actually stop the spread of COVID, so who all get back on our feet and, and so forth. So that's the strategy I have to, uh, 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 tackling, uh, 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 our recovery from COVID.
Great, thank you so much. I would like to, I may like to take a little step back in terms of how do you intend to ease the burden of, of people that live in your community? How do you intend to ease that burden of them being able to get the, uh, the pandemic packages that are being released for businesses and things like that? How, how do you intend to implement that? I know you are interested in easing the burden, but how do you want to, how do you want to achieve that?
So the way you actually achieve it is you help, you partner with organizations that actually help these businesses apply for these loans. And make sure that, that, that t's are crossed and the x's are adapted. Because if they do not follow the, the right protocol, they're not going to be eligible for the PPE loans. And again, PPE loans is not free, there are certain steps you have to follow that if you, 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 you maintain those steps, the loans will be forgiven in the future. So I don't want people to have the impression that, well, you get the PPE loan, you go and spend it on whatever you want to spend it on, and you don't know. The loans are given to people struggling with small businesses, but there are steps you have to follow that those loans will be forgiven in the future, that you don't have to pay back. So that's what I'm actually going to, uh, 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 partner, my office is going to partner with those organizations to help these small businesses get that. And as a public defender, I work with legal aid and I know the eviction moratorium is, is, is going to come up somewhere. Thousands and thousands of New Yorkers, especially here on the North Shore, they're going to be evicted. Because you know there's been a freeze on eviction, on the housing court, uh, they, they, they're not fully open, they've been open remotely for emergency cases. But I'm telling you, once the governor lifts the moratorium on, 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 on the, um, the, the freezing of, of eviction. You're going to have thousands of cases in, in housing court where landlords are trying to get rid of people, get rid of people. Who by fault of, 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 of not their own, that actually lost their job because of COVID, that got laid off because of COVID, they couldn't keep up with their rent. And these people now, they have to be evicted. So we have to have a balance with satisfying the landlord that he needs to get his capital and his, his rent through these programs. And making sure these people, these families stay in their homes and they're not, uh, 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 kicked out and be homeless. So it's a balancing act when it comes to actually helping, uh, small businesses or helping people on the North Shore recover, uh, from this, uh, 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 pandemic.
So if I'm a resident of the North Shore community in, in your area than in New York, if I'm the resident and, and I'm interested in getting a loan. To, to, to help both my business or whatever program that I'm running. And if I get in contact with you directly or your office directly, you would be in a position to help me navigate the process of getting that loan, alright?
Exactly, I, 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 again, I, I'm not just going to navigate the, the process. But I'm going to also, my office is also going to help you navigate the consequences of, 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 of getting the loan. The repercussions of the loan, how the loan could be forgiven in the future, and what you have to actually have on your books for the loan to be forgiven. And that's going to actually ease the burden when it comes to these loans.
Great, thank you so much, Brother Kevin, I appreciate that insight. With that being said, what is your top priority outside of pandemic recovery?
Um, so my top priority, if, if it's not pandemic, it will actually. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I'm. Yeah, I can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah. I will actually say, um, investing in education. Uh, because again, um, to, to me, education is a, is, is, is a holistic approach when it comes to, um, our young people here on the North Shore. And when I say education, I, I just don't mean building more schools and so forth. I mean actually tackling our educational gap that we see amongst our young people. Because to me, once you address that issue, you address a lot of other issues. What do I mean? Well, ninety percent of the young people that I represent in criminal court, ninety percent that commit serious crimes. I'm not talking about your little shoplifting, I'm not talking about your little trespass, I'm not talking about your little smoking marijuana, I'm talking about burglaries. I'm talking about shootings, stabbing, gang assault, rape, burglaries, serious felonies. I see a correlation where they barely graduate high school. And it tells me something, it tells me that once we invest in our young people to actually go to vocational schools. Because everybody's not built for college, we all cannot be lawyers and doctors and engineers. Some people are built for vocational schools. But what it tells me is if we could invest early in our young people to actually have a foundation, an educational foundation. They're more than like, less likely to end up in the criminal justice system and then the cycle is going to repeat itself. And how do we do that? We have to invest in more after-school programs. Again, when you have a single parent living on, on the North Shore and that parent cannot help that child do their homework because they have two jobs. They're either doing security or working as a home health aide or working in a group home. And they do not have the time to sit down and help that little kid do their homework. That kid should be in an after-school program where you have people actually help the kid do that homework. That will actually help that kid keep on track with their peers. So that's important for me. Also, we need summer programs. We always see an increase in shootings in the summertime, why is that? Because our young people, they're idle, they're not around, they're not engaged, they're not involved. And there's a saying, an adult's mind is a devil's playground. When they're not doing nothing, when they have no activities, what do they do? They hang out on the block, they hang out with, with friends who have peer pressure. And then they do things that are almost always not legal and then we see them back in the criminal justice system. I decided to go to law school, I was, I was early studios, when I was in high school, because my mom actually pushed me to, to do a, 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 a debate. I saw myself in a debating and that actually motivated me. Every summer, I looked forward to the debating and I look, you know, I was motivated to actually stay, you know, and, and that actually steaming of, uh, 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 going to streets and doing activities. I also play sports, I play soccer. And soccer was, was, was also a means of me being involved in my community, being involved with my young people and, and making me to stay out of trouble. So, so I think we need these activities in the summertime to get our young people, um, off the streets.
So if I get you correct, in terms of your top priority outside of, of the pandemic recovery would be education. Where the affordable housing fall within your top priority?
Well, um, affordable housing is in my top four priorities. My first priority is, is the economic recovery, my second priority is, is, um, education. My third priority is police relationship and, 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 and community policing. My fourth priority is, 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 is public housing, affordable housing. My fifth is transportation and that's geared towards the North Shore. So if you ask about affordable housing, yes, of course. I, I'm a product of, of, um, public housing, I grew up, um, on Park Hill. I lived in Stapleton before I moved to Park Hill. So I know the qualms of affordable housing. I know what it feels like to be in the elevator and people ask for the piss in the elevator. I know what it feels like to live in a building where your neighbors do not care about the sanity of the building. Where you have a neighbor that's going to play music, I remember back in the day, they played music, loud music till four, five AM. And you called the police and they say, well, it's not a crime. I know that, I know, I, I know it, I know, I know what it feels like to be ashamed when you bring a guest to your building. And you're so ashamed because he entered the elevator and it's pee everywhere in the elevator. I know that. And we have to address these issues when it comes to, uh, 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 affordable housing and public housing. We have to, we have to work with Nisha to actually do the repairs. I also know what it feels like to live in public housing where there is no heat in the wintertime. I remember back in the day, we used to put a stove on, we put a big pot of boiling water on the, on the stove because the heat is off. And you call the renting office, they're not picking up and then tell you to call 311. You call 311, 311 tell you to call 911, you call 911, 911 tell you to call 311. I know that, I, I know it because, because, because I've been there. And I think it's unfair to have young kids, you know, mothers and kids in public housing. Where in the wintertime, when it's like five degrees, ten degrees and there's no heat. And they have to put, uh, 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 boiling water on the stove so they could, they could stay, stay warm in the, um, in their apartment. I think that's, that's unacceptable and that's something I really want, I, I, I really want to address and tackle.
Thank you so much, Brother Kevin, I appreciate that insight as well and the clarity on where your priorities are. Now, uh, I want to turn the floor over to my colleague Levi, Mr. Levi Daniels, are you available?
Yeah, I hope I'm, I'm better now, am I?
Yes, you are.
We apologize for the break in transmission from now on in. We are broadcasting out of our studio today. Yes, that's what I have some technical difficulties, but. Yes, that's why I have some technical difficulties. But Richard, again, it's nice having you on this platform. Um, I follow uh uh kind of like uh two minutes, four seconds uh uh of you um posted on on the YouTube, that the the New York City uh photos of voters mentioned to not partisans and about the candidates uh within the city's election. And I captured two key things, um one of which is about Friday's you know, I know you have been here before, raising racism, but you 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 spoke a little bit about your first experience uh uh when it comes to racism in the United States, where you got over about twenty times. Can you, you know, take a little bit into that?
Well, so um, you know, when 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 I came here um af- after high school, uh it was it was just door dropping and 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 it was it was different. When I said different, you know, uh when you're in Africa, uh you do not experience racism because every, almost everybody's black. So you don't have the same um energy when it comes to, well, you're inferior because you're you're a different race. Uh um you you it's not something you you you're aware of, you're not conscious of it, because we're we're all the same. So you have that presumption that people are not looking down on you just because of how you look. You 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 almost always think that people are going to judge you based on the content of your character and what you actually do, uh uh if it's positive or negative. Um but but when I came here on on Staten Island, I I I actually saw saw it, it it was the opposite. I saw people having a presumption that I was doing something wrong just because I was a I was I was a black person. And and it wa- it wa- it was mind-boggling to me, it was very shocking to me. Um and because and what 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 um exacerbated that was, I I live in public housing. And when you live in public housing, um back in the day, the the NYPD had had a a a a stop and frisk program where it was legal for the police officer to walk up to any black male and presume they're armed and dangerous. Literally, the police will walk up to you, ask you to stop, and pat you down. And the 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 inference was, there's a presumption you actually had guns or drugs on you. And I never had a gun, you know, back in Liberia or here. I've never possessed a weapon ever in my life. Uh I never sold drugs. I've never used drugs ever in my life. So it it was just funny to me that, you know, I'm 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 a black man, I'm six feet two inches tall, and I'm walking in these buildings, and I'm being stopped and patted down by the NYPD numerous times. And it was mind-boggling to me. I I didn't understand why. But 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 then I I I literally got the gist of it that, well, I fit the category, I fit the profile of every young black male that they thought was a criminal. So they did it over and over and over and over, and then that that didn't break me. It actually motivated me, it actually encouraged me to keep pushing, and it actually set me on my path um to go to law school. So those experiences actually pushed me to actually become an attorney.
You spoke about uh living in a kind of a, I don't want to use the word deserted, but on a served uh community. Also, in that uh 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 two minutes, thirty four seconds, I'll be quick. You say you you find yourself living in the on a served community. Are you attributing uh the 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 marginalization of this community to racism?
I I didn't hear the question, sorry.
The question raised, you grew up in a in a on a served community. Is there any link between racism in your day and that of of the reason why our community is being on our serve or that community for which you are representing is being served?
Well, I think the problem here is 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 we have a a class, a class on 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 war. Meaning, um the 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 system is structured in a way where when you're in public housing, public housing from 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 the, from from back in the day when it when it was initiated, public housing was meant to be a temporary basis of living. Public housing was never meant to be a permanent means of living. So the government in, it's it's public housing, just imagine, it's it's like a shelter system. When you're in a shelter, that's not your home. You've just been there temporarily until you get on your feet. It it was the same mentality, the same idea that the public housing system was was built for people who were actually struggling to be settled, and once they get back on their feet and start working, they will move into the public uh 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 permanent housing. So the government didn't actually fully fund these public housings. The government didn't actually give all the resources they actually needed. And when you live in public housing, you see that the more you work, the more work you pay. It's 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 like a quamar, it's like it's it's confusing because if you work less, you pay less. You pay, you could pay almost twenty-five or thirty-five hours if you if you do not work, if you live in public housing. So sometimes, it it makes people feel like they shouldn't push themselves and reach their full potential because they do not want to pay market rent. Now, for instance, if you live in the Stapleton or Park Hill area, the market rate is, I think it's twelve hundred or thirteen hundred, right? So why should you pay twelve hundred dollars in your apartment because you're working hard? But your neighbor in the same building, on the same floor, he's paying thirty-five hours' rent for the same one-bedroom. That's not fair. So then you now, you don't have the impetus to actually push yourself. So when you ask the question that, well, um public housing is 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 mainly uh on the serve, I think it's 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 meant by design to be on the serve. It's meant to actually make people not to be so comfortable in public housing that it should be reminded that the goal of public housing is temporarily, is for you to actually get on your feet, get your ducks in order, and move to permanent housing, move out and get your own homes and so forth. But again, far too often, we see the government, they're more than likely to just frown on people who live in public housing and don't give their re- their resources. And and also, listen, we, if people who actually live in public housing, need to hold their elected officials accountable. And 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 I'm saying this, I've never been a politician, this is my first time running for public office, but people need to hold their elected officials accountable. I think if the if the residents of public housing actually come out and vote, I think politicians will take them seriously. But far too often, you have people in different neighborhoods who actually vote. So you have elected officials who give those people a priority when it comes to listening to that that concerns the people who live in public housing. And that's the problem.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh uh my friend got a photo, my colleague got a photo, uh you can't see the the photo. I just like uh 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 ask you this, just find a question for now. You spoke about uh trying to to create a uh harmonious relationship between the police and that of the citizenry of the community for which you do all, the 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 politics you are going to be representing. Far too long, the topic of everything have been updated, those difficult topics are in 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 the United States particularly. And um my question raised, looking at the scope, looking at the 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 land, the landmark, if you do your 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 a- analysis or do your study or research, research tells you that you got about forty percent, those are, they are people of color. How are you going to run that when it comes to racism, to ensure that that gap is reduced, particularly in the community for which you because it's it's, I want to believe that it's dominated most, you talk about those are marginalized places, by people of color. And most of whom today are are are, you know, regressive, spending most of their times behind back. How are you going to run that relationship to reduce the gap?
All right, I think if I heard the question properly, you're saying that uh the North Shore is is diverse and forty percent are people of color and and they're uh uh and and in that forty percent, there are people in in custody, and how am I going to help to to um reduce the amount of people in custody? That's, even though it's a technical difficulty, but I think that's the question. If that's the question, well, again, uh our criminal justice system is not perfect, right? Uh I I I work in criminal court, I've been doing that for nine and a half years. So I I I understand intimately uh the flaws of the criminal justice system and the presumption of 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 innocence. I understand that um a lot of people who actually get arrested, uh they get held in custody for um um literal or 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 a very small amount of money because they can't make bill because they're poor. I, the lowest amount of money I had if my client stayed in jail was hundred dollars. I had a guy still took, he's he was in custody for three months, and his bill was hundred dollars. And it's illegal, it's it, I mean, it's not illegal, but it's it's unethical for us lawyers to pay for our client's bill. It's 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 against our practice. So for instance, if I'm representing you and your bill is hundred dollars and a half hundred dollars, I can make a bill for you. No, I'm not, I'm not supposed to. It's your friends, your family, your acquaintances that's supposed to bill. So how does a guy actually stay in jail for almost three months and his bill was hundred dollars? And he was so poor, he didn't have a hundred dollars to pay to make bill. Think about it. Now, there's been new bill reform. The problem with the new bill reform is, there's been a lot of misinformation about the new bill reform. Now, before bill reform, uh prosecutors used to actually make plea deals to our clients because they knew our clients could not make bill. So people had no option but to plead guilty. Let me give you an example. Uh let's say you're working, you live on the North Shore, uh you have a criminal record. Maybe you 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 used to be a troubled person in the past when you were younger, you got arrested several times, and then you went to the mall and you 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 shoplifted by mistake, or you just shoplifted because you know, you 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 know, you didn't have all the money. So you took something, you didn't pay for all of them. You get arrested for shoplifting. Now, because you had a criminal record, well, the prosecutor now is going to ask for a thousand dollars' bill. Now, because you're poor, you don't have a thousand dollars. So the only option is, you're going to stay in custody while we prosecute your case. The bad news is, for a misdemeanor case, it takes up to six months before we go to trial. Six months before you have the day in court to actually go to trial. For a felony, it takes up to a year before you actually go to trial. So think about it. Are you going to sit in jail for six months? Or if the prosecutor comes to you and says, well, uh John Brown, I know you shoplifted, I want you to plead guilty to shoplifting, and I will give you five days' community service. Or I want you to plead, I want you to plead guilty to shoplifting, and you will go home tomorrow. Nine out of ten times, even if it was a mistake anymore, you just say, well, I'll plead guilty. But guess what? When you plead guilty, that adds on your criminal record. Your criminal record keeps going up and up and up and up. So every time you have these encounters, you just plead guilty to go home because why? Maybe you don't want to lose your job. Maybe you want to go back to your girlfriend or your wife. Maybe you got to go to school. Maybe you got to pick up your daughter from the daycare the next day. Maybe you got to get your child from the bus stop. So all these things make you want to plead guilty, just go home. But then it adds on your criminal record, and your record keeps ticking and ticking and ticking. What bill reform did though, bill reform stopped that. Bill reform made only if you got arrested for a violent felony. And let me repeat this, because there's a misinformation out there. The misinformation here is in New York, once you commit any crime, any crime, you go to court, the judge got to let you to go home. That is not true. There is qualifying offenses and non-qualifying offenses. What does that mean? Qualifying offenses, there are offenses, there are felonies, violent felonies, rape, burglaries, robberies, assault in the second degree, assault in the first degree. Any violent felony, the judge could set bill on you. Non-qualifying offenses, there are misdemeanors, there are non-violent felonies. So now, if I get arrested for shoplifting, I don't have to plead guilty. There's no pressure, there's no rush on me. So now I get to go home, go to, back to my normal life while I fight the cases. So again, when you ask, how can I reduce the prison population of black and brown people in 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 criminal court? I want to clarify and explain the misconception when it comes to bill reform. Because explaining and clarifying that will actually educate our people, e- 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 explain to people that bill reform is actually good for our clients and so forth. So that's, that's how I actually intend to um reduce that uh that gap.
Well, folks, if you are just joining us, this is Family Connection in Action, uh the forum where we share life-changing experiences uh connected or stay connected. Let me call it back in studio, but Benjamin Ketter.
Thank you so much, um Minister Levi, and thanks to Councilor Richards for his insight and actually educating the community or the public in terms of what is happening in that community as he's running to become a council member for District number forty-nine. Um, with that being said, uh Councilor, I would like to take a little step back. There are some key things that you said that were very interesting to me, especially like when you talk about uh public housing. It's not a place for permanent residency. It is meant for temporary purposes. And I personally, I must tell you that I front up on people that take it to be a place of permanent residency because it makes people actually lazy, and it discourages other people that are really striving to see that the meetup of the requirement, for example, where you were setting an example saying, I'm paying twelve hundred dollars for uh an apartment, my next door neighbor pays thirty-five dollars. What sort of encouragement will I get from that type of transaction, you know? So it's very strange. So that was intriguing and very interesting to know. But take a little step back in terms of policing with your experience. In policing, uh what then do you see as the future of policing in New York City? You know, what is your position when it comes to the city council reform package that have been announced since January twenty-nine? What 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 is your position on that then? What do you think? What do you see as the future of policing in New York City?
Well, um what what I'm going to say here is first, um I don't think we should vilify and demonize the police because um I think that we need a police. You know, um I think I think it's naive to think that um we live in a utopian society where uh we don't need a police and it's all kumbaya and, but because, you know why I think it's naive? Because I represent real, real people who commit real crimes. You know, I, the worst, I don't, one of the worst crimes, one of my, the worst clients I ever represented in criminal court was a guy who raped an eleven-year-old child because um her mom worked overnight. So the mom has a night shift, and then when she goes to work, he sleeps, and that's his girlfriend, daughter, he sleeps the little girl overnight. When the mom is working, he got her pregnant. You know, how to defend him in criminal court? I I didn't have a case to defend because once they did a DNA and it was positive, the guy was, he was done. But my point is, because I have, I ha- I have two little girls, my daughter is two and my other daughter was eight. So even though I was representing this person in criminal court, I was offended. Like I I if 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 I wasn't a lawyer, I would I would I would do some, I would I would not, and I would do something to this guy myself. But I had to wear a mask and just defend him in criminal court and fight for his rights because I believe he needs a a good representation to navigate his way through the criminal justice system. So when you ask me about police, I think we need the police to actually tackle the illegal guns that is coming to in New York City. Because you 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 know, when you go to certain states, you know, down south, you could easily get a gun with a state ID. That's all you need. And these people buy these guns out of state and bring it to New York, and we have our young people, like I I alluded to earlier. We need our young people to actually be involved in summer programs, vocational schools, so they do not connect with these people who have guns to terrorize our communities. So I want the police to do their job when they have the opportunity to do their job. That's what I want. But also, I don't think the police are superheroes. I don't think the police could do everything. You know, I think um we should have mental health professionals actually come on to instances where people are going through mental episodes. What do I mean? There have been so many times where you have people going through different hallucinations, uh breakdowns with mental health issues, and the police respond, and sometimes it's not always positive because now uh the police sometimes use uh lethal weapons and kill these people. I think we need to have police and some mental health professionals respond to these instances where they could actually address the issue uh to make sure these people actually have the help and the treatment uh uh they need. I don't think you need police in our um high schools and our middle schools. I I I I disagree. I had a client, right? I had a little girl who was sixteen years old in a criticize school. Um, her group, you know, young people, they always have groups. So her group had a fight with a different group in the hallway of the high school, criticize school. The police officer, the school safety officer, who's an NYPD officer, went to separate the group fight. My client put her arms and hit the NYPD officer in the face. This sixteen-year-old kid got arrested for a felony because in New York, if you injure or if you hit a police officer in the line of duty, it's not a misdemeanor, it's a felony. And this little sixteen-year-old girl got arrested for a felony at sixteen for assault And this little sixteen-year-old girl got arrested for a felony at sixteen for assault on the police officer. Now, think about it, back in the day, we didn't have police in the school. We have school safety people, the school had their own private security. If this happened, it would, it would have been a regular assault, you know, everybody would just dust it off and she would go home. She would be suspended for one day, she would go to the principal office and they would talk to her, they would call her parents, she would be in trouble, she would go home. But now, this little girl has to go through the entire criminal justice system. Pictures taken, picture taken, being in jail, and 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 just the whole process. And I think it was very traumatizing for a sixteen-year-old kid. So I don't think the police are superheroes, I don't think they should do everything. I think the police should do their jobs, it should not be vilified and demonized. But I think police officers who actually abuse that discretion to serve should be held acco- accountable. And I want, it's a balancing test, the police should do their jobs, but those that actually abuse that discretion should be held accountable.
Thank you so much, Councilor Richards, I appreciate that as well. Now, um, as you know, transportation is very key in New York in general, especially in New York City. And you're running to be a councilman for District forty-nine in the North Shore area. Um, how will you like to see transit improve on the North Shore?
Well, again, people always say with the with the with the um, forgotten borough, but we're the isolated borough. Meaning if you want to go to Manhattan, uh, you gotta take the ferry. You know, that's the, that's the fastest way to go to Manhattan, the ferry is like thirty minutes. You know, it comes every thir- during rush hours, every fifteen minutes, regular time, it's it's every uh, on thirty minutes. Back in the day, I remember in two thousand and three and four, it was every hour. So if you miss the boat at four o'clock, you gotta wait till five o'clock to get the next boat. I I I'm happy, i- i- it has actually improved now, it's every thirty minutes. If you want to go to Brooklyn, you gotta actually take the virus on our bridge to Brooklyn. And then you gotta pay a toll, you gotta pay a two-way toll back and forth. Again, we're isolated on Staten Island because we're, we're, we're on an island. I want to see that improve. My 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 greatest um, joy would be to 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 have a a a a light rail, a train system that will actually connect us from from Staten Island to to Brooklyn or Manhattan within two, three minutes. Because people should be able to work in Manhattan or live in, start down and go to Manhattan in two, three minutes, like you do in 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 the rest of the borough. While you're in Brooklyn, you could go to Manhattan five, five minutes, four minutes. You go to, you you know, you go to the Brahms, you go to Queens and so forth. Um, but 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 for Staten Island, it's always a hassle, you either gotta wait for thirty minutes minutes on on the ferry or you gotta pay a toll to go to Brooklyn, and I think that's unacceptable. But when it comes to transportation, I want to actually address the congestion that we have here on the North Shore. If you go to downtown Staten Island, around Bay Street, Victory Boulevard, uh, uh, around the ferry area is very, very tight and congested. We do not have free spaces, we do not have open spaces, you know, we 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 have very tight streets. And now there's a lot of economic development coming on the North Shore, you you have a lot of traffic, especially during rush hour. And how do we address that? We have to change and redesign and reroute a lot of these streets. Some of these streets got to be made into one-way from two-way because it's so tight. Some of these streets got to be no parking. I mean, there is bike lanes here on the North Shore, but you cannot ride your bike safely on the North Shore unless you want to get hit. You know, so we actually have to redesign and re-engineer the traffic uh, 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 design here on the North Shore to address those issues.
Great, thank you so much, Councilor. Um, I know we are running out of time. I would just like to throw it over to my colleague, uh, Braliva. Do you have any follow-up question from your end?
Oh, well, uh, again, it has been a pleasure, but uh, but having to to happen on this platform. Uh, you got many uh, competitors that are contesting for this identical uh, seat. Somebody is uh, sitting over there wanting to know, what is this thing that you think in you so differently, that you want to contribute? Um, that disting you from from the other, other people that are contesting? What is that one thing? I can't show that 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 lady is in the project, that want to leave from the project, but she can't just find her way. Struggle with 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 this education stuff in New York. And they can't find the way, they've been stigmatized and all the things, that child have been stuck in prison. And like you said, I cannot have that drug state at the knee. What is that one that you can speak of that separates you from the other killing day?
Well, um, the the um, the 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 answer is quite short, it's it's real passion. And when I say real passion, there are nine people in this race, but I could tell you, eight of them, the work they do in the community, they were getting paid for it. Um, when when my opponents tell you, well, I've done this, I've done that, I've done this, that was their jobs. In other words, if someone's job is, for instance, say, well, I work in this office and I help fund this project. They were getting a paycheck, at the end of the day, they they did their taxes and they got paid. When I tell you I have real passion for public service, I don't get paid for the work I do. I'll give you an instance, I told you earlier on, someone got killed on Park Hill. I did a speed, a petition to get speed bumps on Park Hill for the safety of the community. Zero, zero, I didn't get paid a dime, it was all based on passion. Matter of fact, I used my own money to buy this, the 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 paper, I went to Staples, I printed the paperwork, I bought the clipboard, I bought pens. My own money, because I care about the community deeply, that I invested and now these speed bumps are there. I also told you, I did a petition to fix the Stapleton Playground, the park. So our young people could play soccer, bas- uh, basketball, uh, football, uh, uh, and so forth. That's passion. When I took a week walking around the community to get signatures for the petition for the park to be fixed, I got paid zero, zero dollars. Nobody gave me any money. So it's all passion, because why? When a committee is in, is improved, when we have better parks and be- and and speed bumps to to actually help with the speeding our community, I feel better that the, our people in the community are actually benefiting. So if if it was separation from my opponent is passion, not just talk, passion.
Thank you very much, not just talk, but passion. Uh, that is the voice of uh, our brother, our colleague, very energetic man. A person that I've experienced and know for myself, a man that is down to earth, that we eat together, we play soccer together. I mean, we we do the government boom whatever you, I mean. Yeah, that that's the voice of Kerry Ritchie, our brother Ritchie, um. You have had a lot of followers, just quite recently, on Saturday, you had around the Park Hill area where you have people uh, 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 coming to get from different sectors. I mean, they were just pulling in text to be a part of this richest team or Team Ritchie or this richest project. Special message that you have for those guys out there? To that you excel and 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 win the city.
Listen, I I I I just want to tell people, listen, you 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 have to believe, um, I believe in myself and that's why I jumped in this race. Uh, far too often, we're overlooked because you're born here, you're an immigrant, and they think you just, you should just follow, but we're we're here to lead. And I I I want to tell folks that, listen, uh, we 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 have the numbers, but we have to un- unite ourselves and we have to come out and actually vote. And the election is seven days from now, June twelfth is early voting, election date is June twenty-second. But I want you to know that I need you to pledge to yourself that even if you cannot vote, for instance, if you're not yet a citizen or if you're not a registered Democrat, or if you're out of state um, or you 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 know, like, or 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 you don't care about politics. Pledge yourself that, well, after listening to this program, that I'm going to pledge to get five people to vote for Kelvin Richards for City Council that uh, 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 on this year. And I can guarantee you, we're going to make our community proud and 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 I'm going to be a voice for the people, I'm not going to change, I've never changed. I'm going to be in the community, I'm going to have uh, uh, my office in the community. So I'm not going to be somewhere where I I won't be uh, uh, accessible, I will be accessible and I'm going to fight for yours. So please, vote for Kelvin Richards and if you cannot vote, tell a friend to tell a friend to vote for Kelvin Richards, thank you.
Thank you very much, Benjamin. Benjamin, you are muted.
Oh, the community that you live in or the community in which you want to become a councilman have some healthcare disparities. Reportedly, um, Staten Island is the only borough that does not have a full-service hospital, which is kind of shocking. Um, if you become a councilman or if you are elected, what is your position on the public hospital for Staten Island being built?
Well, I think it's embarrassing that we're the only borough in New York City, we don't have a public hospital. You know, uh, if you go to o- other places, we have a public hospital that's owned by the government, you know, and and there, they're not, they're not too picky about insurance and so forth because it's a government hospital. But here on Staten Island, we have um, the uh, the Ramsey Hospital and Staten, Staten University Hospital, they're all privately owned. Uh, what, first, I have two, two, uh, 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 two positions. Short term, I want to secure funding for these two hospitals so they can keep providing the services that we provided thus far. In the long term though, I want to actually see a public hospital here on the North Shore. So our residents do not have to worry with the quagmire of not having the proper insurance to be treated. I think um, human health, I think is a human right. I don't think he- your health is a privilege, I I don't think you should choose between your health, you know, and 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 feeding. You know, you know, you know, you, I think you 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 should choose on the kind of soup you want to eat. You know, if you want pan bato, you want quesadilla or tabagi. But I don't think you should choose between living or dying, meaning eating or going or 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 going to the hospital. So it's something that is a priority for me, but I I'm a realist. I think realistically, we cannot have a public hospital in the next year or two. So I want to secure funding for the two hospitals we have here to actually keep servicing our people. And the long term, maybe in the in 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 the next four to five years, uh, actually push for a public hospital here on the shore to um, uh, 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 to address um, the the medical concerns of our um, residents.
Thank you so much, that's very important to have a full-scale hospital in the community in which you are vying to become a councilman. Now, the position that you are hoping to get or be elected to eventually is probably being held by someone else. What efforts that the person that is currently holding that position, that councilman or councilwoman that is holding that position right now, what effort will you let to continue? That they have already started and you will let to continue? And what will you let to do differently from what they are doing right now?
Well, uh, uh, the the council seat is is prob- is probably, is currently held by uh, Councilwoman Debbie Rose. Uh, she's been in the seat for um, on twelve years now and she's term limit out. Uh, what I want to do differently, I want to be more accessible. Um, I I I, again, I I'm not knocking her for for uh, uh, um, 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 allegations that she wasn't that accessible, but my office want to be accessible. I think, I I I think it's, it's um, it's 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 primarily upon my office that if you, if 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 a resident contacts my office, you should hear it back from me within forty-eight hours. You know, I'm not saying I want to solve all your problems, but at least you will hear from me and you will know that I could refer you to someone or I, or I, or at least my ear uh, listen to whatever you have to say, so that's what I want to, I want to do differently. Uh, what the councilwoman has done, she's actually uh, uh, laid the groundwork for the uh, the Bay Area uh, on development. She laid the groundwork for the Empire Outlet, um, she also laid the groundwork for the uh, the First Will. Staten Island was supposed to have the biggest First Will in the world, it was supposed to be a a tourist attraction. I live ten minutes walk from the fr- the proposed First Will, which is going to be an economic boom. My house value is going to go up, you know, because it was going to be like a very, you know, a a a high-end uh, neighborhood. I live in um, New Brighton, uh, but for 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 some reason, the First Will didn't come to fruition. Uh, there is talks now for a smaller will that, because listen, in the summertime, what we see on Staten Island is you have tourists come to spend money from Europe. You should know that the European pounds has more value than the US dollar. So people come from Europe to spend money here in New York City. New York is one of the the worst, first and the and the most visited tourist a- attraction in the world. People come from all over the world to spend money in New York City. They get the ferry, they come off Staten Island and there's nowhere to go. So what you see them do, they make a U-turn, get back on the boat and go back to Manhattan or Brooklyn, that's unacceptable. So my 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 dream is to actually have a tourist attraction in and around the ferry area. People actually come and spend their money here to help our local businesses and so forth. So those are the things I want to actually continue doing.
A young man, a family man, a legal councilman with strong determination and dreams for his community, vying to become the City Councilman of New York City District Forty-nine. Councilor Kevin Richards. Now, for your closing remark, what will you say to the people that you want to vote for you to become the councilman? What would be your closing remark to them?
Uh, I want to say I'm a fighter, you know, I've been fighting for um, people's constitutional rights in criminal court for the voiceless for almost a decade now. I want to tell people that I do, I do more with less, meaning from my background, uh, uh, how I became who I am today, I've been given limited opportunities, but I always make the best of the limited opportunities um, I've been given. Uh, and 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 they could count on me to to actually be a strong advocate for their values and their rights. I want them to know I'm one of them, you know, I'm proud to say I'm an, I'm I'm an African immigrant. I'm not shy from saying that, I don't come here and pretend to be, you know, something else, I'm who I am. You know, and and I believe it's not where you're from is where you act. I believe it's when you come somewhere and you assimilate, you could actually make your mark. And I want people that will come after me to see that you can, you can fulfill your dreams if you work hard and if you're given the opportunity. And thank you uh, uh, on this show, uh, I I really appreciate all of you guys and all the hosts, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Kevin Richards. And then to those of you that are listening to us today on Family Connection International, we just want to again apologize for any technical glitches that we had along the line. But it was a great conversation that we had and hopefully we will look forward to having you back again on this platform to just discuss more and more of your dreams for your community. Remember, this program, this forum is a community-based program, is a family-based program, is a place where people come to share their life-changing experiences and stay connected with families, friends and organizations, both far and near. Thank you so much for being with us today, we look forward to talking with you next time on this program. Have a great time, God bless.